Well, we're getting close to seven o'clock here. I am gonna go on mute and give Jim a call. I don't see him. Trying to get in yet, and I'd like to have him here before we start. I'd like to call the public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to solicit comment on the application of 57 Hendy Road to deposit, fill, and construct a single-family home in a flood zone in accordance with section 10.4.9 of the town zoning regulations. I, there's quite a bit of background noise on the circuit, so if if you're not talking, I would ask you to put your phones on mute there. And thank you. The session is being video recorded, and conversations from the hearing will be part of the public record. I'll start by asking the applicants or their representatives to discuss the application. After they've done that, we'll give Agent Halazy a chance to discuss the application, and then the commission members will be able to ask questions. During the public hearing, all the commission members, including the alternates, will be able to ask questions. However, once we get into the deliberations at the meeting following the public hearing, only those commission members seated will be able to participate in the deliberation. Members of the public will have the opportunity to provide comments or questions, and I would ask that the members of the public state their names, so we can get your name into the minutes from our hearing. The pending application section of the town's website for planning and zoning has a long list of documents that also make up the public record. All of those are available for use tonight. I'm not aware of anything that is not on the website that I would expect to be part of the public record. But we can show any of those documents tonight to support the conversation as need be, but I'm not going to go through each of the documents on there because everybody has had the opportunity to take a look at those. And that's all I have. Are there any questions before we get started on how the hearing will proceed? Okay, given that, I am looking, I was looking for Mr. Phelps. Ms. Phelps, are you discussing the application tonight, or do you have somebody who will be going through that for you?
Hi, yeah, I will be starting off, and then Andrew Bush with us at Tom's office, so he'll be able to answer any of the more technical questions that the commission might have.
Okay, and I do not see Andrew on the line at this time?
He's in Tom's office. He's kind of behind the glare on the plexiglass. I pretty much appreciate the commission's time considering our application. Since the last meeting, we provided all the items that were requested. We submitted a revised plan with Johnny E. signature, a driveway turnaround, and made the proposed and existing lot lines more clear. We confirmed that the utility ground had the site walk to familiarize the commission with the lot and answer any questions from that visit. Last week, it was brought to our attention that the commission would be interested in seeing an option of adding 25 feet to the west of the lot and moving the lot width line forward. Engineer worked through that option and provided an alternate plan late last week. We were able to gain 35 feet to the west and straighten out the west line of the lot. It had a jog in it before. Now it's nice and straight. We were able to increase the square footage of the lot 62,000 to 69,942, so we added almost 10,000 square feet to the lot. As you know from seeing the plans, the geometry of the lot is a bit unusual as the lot shape has been affected by the previous realignment of the road. So this can make it a bit difficult to interpret and apply the regulations. Our understanding is that there was some discussion of whether the lot width line was perpendicular enough. The lot width line shown on both plans, the original and the alternate geared by calculating the mean angles of the two side lot lines. So the alternate plan submitted shows the lot width line moved as far forward as we possibly can and still be within the regulations because it can go in front of one of the front lines. And we've made every effort to meet all regulations, address all the questions of the commission, and have the best possible configuration. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have on either on the plan or anything else, and you know, move forward with either plan that the commission finds preferable.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Phelps. Did your engineer or your attorney want to provide any input at this point?
Yeah, Andrew Bushnell here, Bushnell Associate Engineer for the project in Land Surveyor. Just kind of, I don't know what Megan said, you know, about we did widen, widen out the lot by about 35 feet to get as much lock width as we could. You know, the limiting factor with widening out is the existing well pump shed for 57 Hendy Road that needs to stay inside the 25-foot side yard setback for that zone. So we pretty much moved the line, so the setback is just about up against that well pump house. We would be removing the existing greenhouse at the existing 57 Hendy Road residence to make that happen. You know, it does add about 10,000 square feet on most of the lot size. You know, the thing here is really the lot width and how the lot is laid out. The lot was originally laid out based on the geometry of the old road there that, you know, we show. What I did on the alternate plan was I took the approximate center line of that old road, what I believed to be the center line of the old road, and did a 50-foot setback from that to establish a building line. The older plans, we just, we did a 25-foot building line from that property line along there. So this sets the line back a little further, which is fine with us, and I calculated a lot with, you know, using that line. Now, because as you can see, with taking 50 feet from the center of Hendy Road really doesn't put much building line on the property because, as I said, you know, the property geometry, property lines were established years ago by that old.
Mr. Bushnell, if I can interrupt just a minute? And do you have a copy of the drawing with the width description that you would like to put up so that you can use your cursor to point to it so everybody can see, or if not, I can put up the one that's on the website. I just won't be able to allow you to, you know, point to it as you might like.
If you turn it up, that's fine, because it's color coded, so we can just talk about it by color.
Okay. Mindy, can?
Mr. Chairman, I can put, I have it on screen. I can, I can display it if you'd like.
Okay, that would be great.
You should be able to share your screen. Anyone should be able to.
Yep, and Attorney Brant, you are on mute.
All right, let's see if I see the screen. There we go. Okay, so I have this blown up a bit, but let me, that's actual size. If you need, if, Mr. Bushnell, if you need it, if you need this increased at all, I may, I may increase it one shot just because I think that's really what you need to show the commission. As long as you need it.
Right, so you can see the green on there, the line going north to south. That's the median or the average bearing of the two sidelines, you know, the, obviously, the right sideline facing from the road in the east has three angle points in it. So you're gonna take the average of that line and then average that with the western property line, and you end up with that bearing there. And then you take 90 degrees of perpendicular to that, and that's where you get the, you get your 200-foot lock width. So that's what those green lines are. The red line, you know, establishes the 50 foot from the center line of the old road, and the purple color line is 50 feet from the center line of Hendy Road. So you can see how I, you know, this interpretation of the lot with, I use the old road center line because that's how the lot lines were determined, you know, based on the old road, not on the new or Hendy Road. You know, I was able to get 200 feet that way on that interpretation of the red. You know, it's a little difficult to apply that regulation to this lot because of, you know, the geometry of the right away, how it's changed, you know, the Hendy Road locations changed through the years. And then you can see the blue line is the new proposed property line, which moved over about almost 35 feet to the west, and then you can see that existing well pump shedded there, you know, that we need to keep inside the 25-foot side yard for 57 Hendy Road. So, you know, that's, that's how I determine this, this, this lot with scenario. And then there's still the scenario that, you know, I have on the, on the original submission plan also, which is a little, is a little bit different. And then this one.
Okay. Did you have anything else that you wanted to provide on the application at this point, Mr. Bushnell?
I just, I just add, since last meeting, we got approval from the health department for the subject system. That letter's been put on the revised plans. You know, I think, you know, we had a site walk out there with the commission. I think we addressed, maybe there are a few questions there that we addressed. You know, I'm not aware of any other outstanding issues, you know. You know, I will say that, you know, I think we feel that this proposal is in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood, single families, smaller-sized homes. You know, we set it back about the same distance off of the Hendy Road, existing Hendy Road, as the existing house of 57 Hendy Road. We've, you know, worked with wetlands as far as limiting the areas of clearing and staying away from the wetlands as much as possible, you know, working in the regulated areas, but also staying away from the actual wetlands as much as possible. So I think, you know, it's in harmony with the other houses in the neighborhood next door, you know, and across the street. Hope someone had that.
Okay, thank you. Agent Halazy, would you like to comment on the application at this point? Jim, you're muted. Jim, we're not hearing you. Jim, nobody's hearing you. You have to start over.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I
But it's got an awful lot of reverb.
You'll need to turn down the volume. You'll need to turn the volume, and you're listening because you're echoing yourself.
I have an iPad going as well.
That's better.
Okay. All right. I did go through the general standards in the regulation. Are you hearing the echo?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, starting over again. Did watch through the checklist. I did review the general standards that are in section 10 of the regulations for compliance with construction standards. And if you'd like, it goes one through eight verbatim. You can still do it, right?
Yep, I can, and we don't need to have you go through each of the items on the checklist. Only those that might be of concern to you.
I'm sorry, Jed, what was that?
We don't need to go through each of the individual items. Only those that might be of concern to you.
Okay, I mean, generally speaking, all of those items are addressed either by the health code or the building code. You know, construction is slated to, is proposed for two feet off grade. You know, building code does dictate that materials close to grade be pressure-treated. And there's a limitation on that. You know, there's no construction in the floodway. The mechanicals are pretty much up out of the way. There's, there aren't, there's nothing, I believe I had confirmed with, with Andrew that there was no like air exchanger, which would be, which might be ungrade. That's not, not the case. Other than that, I, I'm good with I'm good with the compliance with standards. That's all I have, actually.
Okay, thank you, Agent Halazy.
You happy to answer any questions?
I'll move on to the commission members at this point. If any of the commission members have questions or comments.
I noticed that that line that Andrew was talking about is coming off of that old Burbank Road, the center of it. Why, why did it come off the center of a non-existent road? I'm just curious. Jed, do you know that answer to that?
I I would prefer to hear from the applicant's engineer. I have I have some thoughts on that, but they're only, you know, supposition because I have not spoken to anybody about the drawing, and I just saw it for the first time this afternoon. So I guess I would ask Mr. Bushnell to, to address that if you would.
Okay, well, as I mentioned, you know, the, it's hard to apply this lot width regulation to to this lot because of the, because of the road geometry and the fact that the road was moved, you know. If we go back to how the block geometry was originally came about was because of the location of old Burbank Road, not because of the location of the existing Hendy Road. So that's how I, you know, that was my thinking here was, let's go with what, what was originally the if this regulation had been in effect way back then, what would have been the the starting point to establish your, your building line?
When, when was that ever a lot? There was never a lot there.
There's always been a lot. It's always been a piece of property.
Well, it was never a lot. It was a piece of property. That's all.
Well, I'll say, you know, a lot piece of property, the property, I don't think that makes a difference, but it was a piece of property based on the existence of old Burbank Road, you know. If old, if old Burbank Road had been where Hendy Road is now, our property line would have been way out along Hendy Road. We wouldn't be having this discussion. So yeah, we're not trying to establish a lot. Sorry, you're laughing.
First, first, we have to talk about that, the fact that it wasn't a lot. Because you've, you've, I've heard this before, there was a lot. It wasn't a lot. It was a contiguous piece.
No, there's a second lot there. There is now a second lot.
There was, there was, there was never a lot. No, no, there was never a lot.
Yeah.
contiguous piece.
Yeah, there is.
We get two tax bills.
We got two tax bills on this.
It's parcel one and parcel two.
But, but it was never, never a lot. It was, it was cut off there hypothetically. I don't know if this really has any meaning in what we're talking about. Hypothetical, I might have had two lots, but it never was a lot, and it certainly wasn't a building lot.
There's deeds that indicate it's a lot. There's a survey and file that cuts it out.
What is, what's the date on the deed?
I don't know. You're going back. I think it, I think it was cut out back in the mid-'80s. I mean, it's been, yeah, it was like the mid-'80s. Like, 1985, the lot was cut out.
No, no.
No.
There isn't a lot.
There isn't a lot. It was back in the 1950s, yeah.
Agent Halazy, I know you spent a lot of time researching the issue of whether this is a lot or not. What was your conclusion on that?
Okay. I'm defining a lot as, as a parcel of land. Seems to be some confusion as between a lot and an approved building lot. And it was never an approved building lot. That's part of the reason that applicant is here before us this evening. It seems to me that the lot was cut, was cut off with the lot, the larger lot created in 1947, the larger lot, I'm sorry. Two pieces of land were cut off of a larger parcel back in '47, as I understood it. And I, to be honest, I thought this was resolved anyways. This was an ongoing issue. And that, that parcel two, parcel that's supposed to be a new house, was in effect the free cut which appeared to be illegitimate free cut based on on its create, the date it was created. And the date of the previous cut.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mark Brant, Council of the Commission. I know that at one point I saw what, what Mr. Halazy is describing, where there, there were two pieces, but they've been extensively reconfigured. It might be helpful if Mr. Bushnell walks the commission through that. I, I don't, that I don't, I can't quickly call up on screen. I'm hoping he can. But because I think what's being said is correct. There wasn't a lot here. But I think that they did a lot line revision is my understanding, and that they, that they, they basically re-did the lot lines. And maybe Mr. Bushnell could, could display that and show you what, what he's describing.
Any chance you have that available, Mr. Bushnell?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so right now the consensus is that the house of 57 Hendy Road, that is, is about you know, it's a, I'm looking for the number here. Yeah, 1.03 acres. And then the land around that is the parcel that we're dealing with, parcel two. You know, and these lots were configured back this way in 1985 from the overall piece of the two lots. So it is a lot. I'm standing on its own by map and by D. And, you know, it was never an approved building lot as far as we're having, it lacked having an approved subject area. So that's one thing we worked through as part of this application to get that done. You know, part of it is what we're proposing, which doesn't really have to do with special permit. Special permit is because we're in the, in the flood, flood zone. But part of the proposal is to adjust the lot lines of the two lots to basically make this the smaller lot, but within, within the tolerances of the regulation. And then make the 57 Hendy Road lot that's an acre. Now, we're gonna make that lot eight acres, and we're gonna make our lot about an acre, about an acre and a half, this parcel two lot. So that's what we're doing. We're not, we're not making any more lots, any less lots. We're just gonna reconfigure lot lines.
Yep, okay, so, so I've got that, and the zoning board of appeals already decided that the applicant could build a house on the lot. So I think that, that is not the topic for our discussion tonight. I would, however, like to go back in, if Attorney Brant could show the diagram that he had earlier on the width discussion. So and I will confess that what was not intuitively obvious to me until recently, the light bulb came on and I see things differently today than I did, you know, at the, at the last meeting, for instance. And so I would, I would like to ask the question, you know, of what I was confused on last time, and so I'll ask the question of the, the engineer here tonight is where would the definition of the building line be?
Well, by the, by the regulations, it's 50 feet from the center of the traveled way, which would be Hendy Road.
Right.
But in this instance, you know, the, the sketchup was just up there. I'm taking it from the center line of the, of the old road because we can't, you know, we can't, we can't apply that, that, you know, achieve a 200-foot lot width using the Hendy Road center line.
Right. And so I guess that really is what I think will end up being the most significant discussion point for the night is whether or not that is consistent with our regulations. And and without any, you know, having come to this conclusion, just, it's always good when you have a specific example to look at. I was under the impression until recently that the problem was with our definition of width. Now I come to the conclusion that our definition in our regulation on width is very satisfactory, and if we were to apply that to the existing lot, it would be very easy. I go back to when we, we started our discussions on this lot, and we were concerned about lack of frontage. And then we all breathed easy when we said we don't have a frontage requirement. We have a width requirement. But now my takeaway is that the problem is not with the definition of width. It's a problem with the configuration of the lot not supporting the definition of width just like it didn't support the definition of frontage. And I think that's where I am trying to come to grips with making sure that we are consistent with our zoning regulations as they exist today. And that's where I'm not seeing the picture that that is consistent with our regulations.
It looks to me like it's very clearly, if you look at it from the old road or the new road, both ways. It looks to me like it's very clearly, if you look at it from the old road or the new road, both ways, you've got over two hundred feet width.
You do. But if you look and, and this is what, uh, the question brought up to me at the last meeting, you know, and I thought we had met it. But for lot width, it says perpendicular to the mean direction of the side lot lines and touches, but is not in front of the building line.
Right.
So the building line is fifty feet from the center line of Hendy Road. And so the width line does not touch the building line. And that is where I am struggling to make sure that we are in compliance with our regulations.
I don't I don't get that.
Okay, well, and, and as I say, I, I'm sure, well, I know I have spent an incredible amount of time over the last, you know, this first came up last July trying to make sense out of it. It wasn't until within the last week, the light bulb came on to me. And, and I felt comfortable understanding the definitions in our regulations. And that's where I am tonight. And, and so that's
Where was that definition again?
Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Chair Kramay.
Where was that definition again? Or what was it? He had it up there a minute ago.
Yep. It was, uh, well, that's the building setback.
Backline, yeah.
And then if you look at lot width, which is here.
Line of measurement of width perpendicular to the mean direction of side lot lines and touches, but is not in front of the building line.
So
So are, are we're going to go over, we're going to start with where they become perpendicular to the two lines, Jed?
Uh, well, so if we were to take a look at the existing house lot line there, which is rectangle, very easy to get your perpendicular lines and have the, uh, you know, the, the width measured. And it's a, it's, you write it about the two hundred foot point from the building line, which is taken as fifty feet from the center line of Hendy Road. So on most lots, our width definition works equally well with frontage. It's the configuration of this lot in the fact that the town owns this piece of property up against Hendy Road that might seem to make it. Well, it does make it very difficult to comply with our regulations. I think that's fair to say. Whether or not it complies might be an issue for the commission to determine. But that's, uh, the, the lot width that's proposed here on green does not touch the building line. If we take the building line from the center line of Hendy Road, which is the travel path.
Yeah, it is.
It seems like this is the time we need to have a variance because otherwise this is a perfectly good lot. And just because it doesn't fit that particular thing due to the road change, I think it should be a variance.
And, and that's a possibility. The other, the other thing that, that came into play here. And it was a situation that I was not fond of, but I thought met our regulations was when the lot proposed connected to the lot on the west side of the existing house. We could use width or frontage. And we had plenty of both to say that this lot met our zoning regulations. Now that we're trying to cut that western part off from the eastern part, we no longer have that latitude. And I, I thought that was a bit of a stretch, but I felt that that was in compliance with the regulations. Where now that we blocked this off, we have to make width work on this eastern part. And I'm struggling to see how that can be. So I wouldn't be having this conversation if it was still the, if we weren't changing the lot line. But we are. At least we're considering it. That's the proposal. And if I'm missing something from any of the engineers or attorneys present, I'm happy to be educated, but I think I finally understand what our regulations mean.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Attorney Brants.
Uh, yeah, for the record, Mark Brants. The commission has discretion here in, in a couple of different respects. The first one, the one that's probably the easiest is is this green line perpendicular enough? All right. Recognizing it's an unusually shaped lot, both because the, the lot sidelines are not parallel to start with. The fact that it has this cutoff in the front. So, uh, one of the reasons I know the applicant increased the width on this west side was because that allowed them to get this line more perpendicular. And what the engineer is saying is I, I took the mean of the two sides and I'm perpendicular to that mean. And so, so issue number one is, is this perpendicular enough? And I think the commission definitely has discretion there as to whether it, it is sufficient or not. The second question then is that line has to touch, but not be in front of the building line or building setback line. And for that, I'm going to go to the regulation. Okay. Because here again, you have discretion. The building line is a line parallel to the street located, to be located by setting back from the center of the traveled portion of the road. Let's stop there. Anything you do here, of course, will, will set precedent. So we want to be sure that whenever you decide, you will apply going forward. It is, you have discretion here. I will tell you, I am hesitant to, to deem a traveled way something that isn't traveled, something that isn't a road, traveled portion of the road. I, I don't know if there's even a road there anymore. Uh, you would know that. I don't. But the idea of using a discontinued portion of a road as a center line of traveled portion, although in this case, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference. Going forward, you could, um, you, you generally, a discontinued road isn't a road. Period.
Exactly.
It's not a traveled way. So although you have discretion there, I, that, that bothers me. However, it says to be located by setting back from the traveled portion. Now here's, here's the, I'll call the wild card, all right? Most regulations like this would say set back at least the depth of front yards required by eleven point two. This says, uh, to be located by setting back from the center line as required by eleven point two. Now let's go back to the drawing. Okay? So the question, one of the questions before, and I think really the key question in this, in this instance is assuming we use the existing traveled Hendy Road, which is here, okay? Does the regulation, when it says set back fifty feet in this case, if it's set back fifty feet, does that mean at least fifty? Or does it mean exactly fifty? Because if it means at least fifty, then that means the engineer could set, could set this, this purple line. He could set it back here. He could put, he could put it right in front of the house. Right? And, and I don't, I mean, I guess the question is then would, or maybe you push the house back a bit. And this is a really question with the engineer, but if, you know, i- if you say it means fifty or more, that is the mid, the mid, you use the minimum of fifty and has to be at least that. That allows them to shift this purple line as far as they need to go until it touches the green line. Now, like I say, I don't know what that does to the house. I'm not quite sure where that falls, but, um, but it certainly does give them another option if this purple line can go back, you know, to here. Of course, that's not two hundred feet. Well, no, I'm sorry. No, it might be. You see, if this purple line, you know, or how would it be? I'm just trying, I mean, i- it is an oddball thing, but if, if the purple line were back to here, would you, would you then have two hundred feet of lot width? Because then it would, it would then be touching. And by the way, there's a drawback to that as well. That would mean technically, all right? Technically, that means that the applicant could put a building here, which in fact, you wouldn't, I mean, there has, there has to be some setback along the, somewhere, right? That may, however, that may depend on where he draws the side, the sides. See, here's his side setback here. Right? He's, he's following that way for side. May, maybe part of this is side. And I, I think there are options here. And I do think if you decide this line, this purple line doesn't have to be exactly fifty, but is at least fifty. All right, that does give them more options to get that two hundred feet and still have the green line touch the purple line. Problem with purple line is it's so far forward, it's, it's off the lot. It's completely off. They have a setback on land they don't own. Right?
Right.
Which isn't fair to them and isn't, isn't carrying out the purpose of the regulation either. We don't want, we don't want their building setback from a line that's not on their property. And that, by the way, is why the engineer drew, drew it red. I mean, I understand logic. I understand why he did it. Okay? He figures that he should set back from his own property line, which is logical. It's just, this isn't a traveled way. But I, I think you have discretion to apply it in this case. And, and, and there, there may be ways of doing this. I, I just, I, I don't envy the engineer. It's a difficult, it's a difficult application of the reg. But one thing that may offer the key is I think it's reasonable to say that it's at least fifty, not fifty exactly. And then maybe that lets you shift this up. I hope that's helpful. It's just the options. Maybe it confuses it more, but I hope not.
I don't think it confused us more. And since we're talking about options is I tried, you know, and again, the commission's job is not to solve the problem. The commission's job is to say whether or not the proposal complies with the regulations. But one of the options that the applicant might consider is not adjusting the lot line at this point in proceeding with the, the discussion on, on does the house meet the requirements of section ten point seven. And I speaking for myself and not the town of Andover, the best solution to this problem would be for the applicant to purchase that little bit of land from the town of Andover, which I see is no use to the town. And it gets rid of all these discussions that we've agonized on over the irregular shape. And I think that you know, makes, uh, makes a lot that is very consistent with the regulations. I know that's, that is not a quick process to get that. But if you took it as a two-step process, leave the lot as it currently is while you're pursuing that. And even if you ended up finding out that for some reason you couldn't buy that land from the town, I think that bolsters your case for making a, a difference like you're trying to show here. But I would, I would love to see the applicant get that little piece of property and, and resolve all these issues that we've agonized for a year on over the unusual fee. Because not every lot can comply with the regulations. And, and I don't know that, uh, that, well, that is an expression as to whether or not to go down that path.
The other thing, Mr. Mr. Chairman, that sort of might give them, um, and again, you're right, it's not our, our charge to solve this, but we, we try to work with people. When we first saw this, when Jim and I first saw this, and I think when you first saw this, Mr. Chairman, you're right, the configuration was different. Someone had a map of the whole property shared. I'm going to stop share. Someone had a map of the whole property displayed, whoever that was. Can you share that again? I think that was Ms. Phillips. That you had it? Yes. Okay, shrink that in a bit. There we go. And why, why don't you just show us, it's like a horseshoe, right? If you can just sort of walk, walk us through, yeah, that. Hey, when we first saw it, the land above the word Hendy on the left. Yeah, was a part of this lot. So basically fifty-seven Hendy was surrounded by this new lot. As the chairman was saying, you had plenty of lot, of lot width, tons of lot width on that westerly side. But now a new line is being suggested, a different line. And that's what created this lot with issue that we didn't have before. Since the owner owns both pieces, there, there, maybe that's an option for them is to, uh, is still, right, exactly, to leave that, that's how we first saw it. We first saw it with that green line. Okay, so that meant that there was plenty of lot width. We didn't have to worry about it. So one option would be for them to, to go back to that configuration, get this lot approved. Then if they're able to buy the land from the town, they can put it back to the way they really wanted it. And that, those are just options. I just, it is an unusual situation, but I think part of this is that the pro, the proposal changed from when we first saw it.
It did, yep. So
So those are options.
So anyhow, that I think covers all the, all the issues tonight that I wanted to discuss with regards to lot width. Do any of the other commission members have any other questions? Because I know this is somewhat newer information to you than it is to me, because I've been, uh, you know, wrestling with this for a long time, trying to figure it out. And what's clear now was not clear at all a month ago. And so I want to make sure that before we ask the commission members to, to vote on something, I want to make sure that everybody is comfortable understanding the regulations as they are. And the couple of options that Attorney Brants mentioned that we might be able to consider with regard to that.
I have to ask a question about the flood map, the FEMA flood map.
Scott, I was just going to say one other thing about the lot width before we moved on from it.
Okay. Yep, yep.
Go ahead.
This is Kevin, uh, Kevin Arnison. So I, I do think that it's important that we keep lot width. I know, um, Mark was saying that, you know, we could start looking at adopting at least fifty. But I think it's important to keep it how it is if, because if we were to do at least fifty, then we start running into, you, you get a gray area between a rear lot and a normal, you know, sixty thousand square foot building lot. So if you can move the set, if you can move that lot width line as far back as you want, then you could basically have a really narrow frontage and a really wide rear of your lot. And then you essentially would have a rear lot. I think that's, in my opinion, and I don't know if this is relevant, but that's what lot width is trying to differentiate is a standard building lot between that and a rear lot. You know what I mean? If you can just move it all the way back.
No, I, I understand your point exactly, and it is a, a good one. And, uh, as I say, one of the things that we, we came through, we, we thought when we didn't have to meet a frontage requirement. we were in great shape. And then, uh, we kept looking at it and, uh, and not true. And one of the options the applicant could do is to use the regulations for a rear lot. And, and I'm sure there's some valid reasons why they did not choose to go that way, but, uh, but a rear lot with this configuration, uh, is, is an option.
Can I just make one more point too about, just because one of the commissioners mentioned?
I mean, go ahead.
Um, one of the commissioners mentioned a variance and part of our variance application that, you know, and we went through that process does have a single family home where there's a concern.
I'm using an iPad.
So we already.
Jim, can you go on mute while Ms. Phillips is talking? Okay, go ahead. Please, please start again, uh.
Um, one of the commissioners mentioned, um, going for a variance as an, as an option for this. And, you know, we already had been through the variance process, but one of the things on our application was approval to construct a single family home where there is a concern about frontage and lot width. So it was part of our, our variance application that, that was approved. I'm hopeful that that is helpful.
For the record, Mark Brants, do you have a copy of, do you have a, is there in the record a copy of your variance approval?
Jim has not posted that yet.
It, it is on the ZBA website.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry.
The ZBA website.
Was, was the application, was it a variance for lot width also? I, I didn't know that.
No, it was not.
Okay.
The application itself, and we've got a ZBA application, referenced non-conforming lots, I believe is, is what, um, Megan's referring to. I think there was a conscious decision not to pursue a variance for the setback for two reasons. One is based on our, our site walk, you thought it might have. Secondly, as the lot itself is, you can't create a lot and then ask for a variance. So you'd have to get a variance to create the lot and and they have, they basically be cutting, taking their lot width away by redrawing that lot line.
I mean, one, one of the unusual features here is that when we first saw it, there's plenty of lot width. Because it, because the, the, because the lot went around, went around sort of a horseshoe around fifty-seven Hendy. So there's tons, there was tons of, of lot width, wasn't usable, but it satisfied the regulation.
So I do have a copy of the application in front of me and a copy of the minutes for approval. And as Ms. Phillips expressed under the, uh, under the paragraph, state the appropriate sections of the zoning regulations you wish to vary or appeal. It says ten point five use in a flood zone in accordance with ten point eight and four point one point two A D non-conforming lots. So she is correct when the application requested that. Now, when I go to the meeting minutes from the zoning board of appeal that approved that, it says applicant seeking relief from section ten point five in accordance with four point one two A of Andover zoning regulation so as to allow for the deposition and fill in construction of a single family dwelling in a flood prone zit district. So I, I did not recognize that until right now, because I wasn't looking for it. But the zoning board of appeals did approve building.
I don't think they did.
If, if the map that they were looking at, and, and I've got to go back, you know, and, and take a look at that now, was, was the one that shows they redrawn lot lines. And it very well could, I just did not do my homework on that prior to coming to the meeting tonight. I thought, you know.
Good.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think, i- if they, if they, if, if the variance is for four point, four point one point two, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, four point one four two is non-conforming lots. This, this, this is not, this parcel is not a legal non-conforming lot. It didn't exist. That's a regular, that's a lot that existed on August ninth of nineteen fifty. I'm looking at section four one two. Um, the, i- it's, it's true that it's not, it's, it's non-conforming as to flood. So yes, that the non-conformity was the flood. But this, a lot of this shape did not exist in nineteen fifty. So I don't think they could have gotten, and, and they could not have gotten a variance under four one two for lot width. That would have been a variance under section eleven point two, which is the minimum lot width in a zone.
Good point. I agree. Yep. Okay, so we're, we're back to where we were before. Uh, in, in the, the issue of lot width is, is for us to address because it's a special permit. You know, my initial thought was that the redo of a lot line was something for the zoning agent to do, since it's not a subdivision. But when we come to the special permit, we're approving the site plan. And that meant, that has to ensure that the lot dimensions and areas are per the, uh, section eleven point two. So.
Jim, I, I was, can I weigh in on the variance issue?
Go ahead, Agent Halsey.
Um, the app, the application alluded to the non-conforming, but it had no bearing on, on what was, was shown on the, on the plan. And so it was really left out of the legal notice, for instance. It was not part of the request that went before the commission.
I got you. And, and that's consistent with what Attorney Brants was just.
Exactly. Yeah. And that's, that's the reason why.
The, the issue of width is not, uh, was not approved by the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, and that is, uh, left for us to do.
Yeah.
But do all the commission members, uh, understand, uh, you know, the, the nuances of, of the discussion on what the building line is and what the lot width definition are? Because I do want to make sure that we have some time to go through the other part of what I really thought we were voting on or asked to weigh in on, which was the construction of the house in the flood prone zone. Okay, hearing no, no other questions on width, I'm going to set that aside for a minute. And I will ask if there are any questions on the construction of the home in the flood prone zone.
I, I, I just wanted to look at that FEMA map. Attorney Brants, do you have that FEMA map that's in with the package or, uh?
If, if, uh, Ms. Phillips, if you close out your screen, I, I will try to go to the website and see if I can bring up the, the map that, uh, Mr. Person is asking for.
I'm sure what's on the print is fine, but it just doesn't match.
No, I, uh, and, and so I did have, uh, a question on, uh, on that myself. So is this, is this the, uh, the map you were looking for?
Right. Now, on the, on the map, it shows that the flood, flood zone goes down ND road, and on the FEMA map, it shows that it's, it would come down through um, the parcel fifty-six Hendy. Come down off of the Skogamuck River, the flood plain would come down and be right in the middle of that, that lot right there. But that's not what it shows on the actual print. And I'm just curious, I'm sure there's a reason for it.
So Andrew Bushnell here again. So we did a detailed study. So that, that's a, that's a flood map. So on top, beyond that, there's a, there's a, what's called a flood insurance survey, FIS survey of the, of the Skogamuck River. And it's a more detailed, it gives you, uh, you know, it, it stations up the river every hundred feet, cross-sectional areas, elevations, all that kind of stuff to do a more detailed, um, determination of the flood. I mean, that's kind of just an overview there. It's close and not always accurate. So we use the FIS information to do a more detailed um, analysis of the, uh, the actual flood boundary and actual flood elevations. So that's why you've seen, seen some difference there.
Mr. Bushnell, I'm not sure that I would be able to find, uh, on the long list of things there, the, the other map that I looked at.
Well, it's not, oh, go ahead.
But from my recollection, the place where you were looking to build the house was not in the flood, not where you expected a flood. Is that correct or am I wrong on that?
We're in the, we're in the area where it would flood theoretically at a hundred years' storm.
Okay, got it.
The flood elevation is three twenty-three and a half, or wait, is it three twenty-nine? Hold on. Yeah, three twenty-three and a half. And that's why we have a house up at three twenty-five and a half. We're raising the house above the flood elevation.
Yep. Okay, any other questions on the, the house construction? And, uh, I know the, the letter that Mr. Bushnell put out, uh, going through the, the requirements of section ten point seven of our regulations, that, that were what, uh, I thought was going to be the heart of the matter for us today. I thought was a very well-prepared letter and, uh, in, uh, and so I, I appreciate, uh, you giving us that. It, uh, but if there's, so I have no questions on the actual construction that they want to, want to build. But if anybody else here, any other commission members has, uh, has a question on that, uh, now would be a good time to ask that. Okay. Hearing, hearing none on that, uh, do any, any of the commission members have any other questions that they would like to ask at this point before we open up to the public? Okay, I have, I have one last question, uh, and it's, is probably a technicality. But on the drawings, uh, e- each of the drawings, it talks about the Andover property that's in that little triangle is being an Andover right-of-way. And I was curious as to where that designation came from.
Well, my, my opinion is it's part of the Hendy Road right-of-way. You know, every roadway is a, is a right-of-way. Um, it's a town, town right-of-way.
Hendy Road has it.
So that's just part of Hendy Road. It's wider than most, you know, most are fifty, sixty feet wide and straight or more or less, you know, uh, symmetrical.
Okay. I, I understand, and I know there's probably precedence that the commission could consider it like a right-of-way. I, I just, uh, wasn't sure that it was actually designated by somebody telling the commission that it was a right-of-way. And, uh, it's, uh, it's a little bit of a subtlety, but I just want to make sure that we were clear on, uh.
Could you please explain the I own a house next door and you did this and just say that? And it doesn't have any bearing on all. Well, it's the same type of thing. Could you do that for me? Explain that you did that? The precedent is for the next door, right? Next door we have the lot with it. Well, I understand that, but it's about the frontage up there.
So is there another comment, uh, that we wanted to make on the right-of-way or are we done on that topic?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, Jim. Phil Phillips speaking.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I also own the house next door on sixty-seven Hendy.
I understand, yep.
Yeah, I didn't know if you knew that.
Yep, I do.
We did the same type of thing with the driveway there that, and we didn't have to purchase the land.
I, uh, understand that as well, and that was what got us into the initial discussion where, where we, uh, found ourselves where we made the incorrect assumption that we needed frontage. And we were just, we weren't going to comment or take action on what may not have been done exactly correctly in the past. But just because something was done in the past, possibly incorrectly, uh, we weren't going to necessarily, we were going to follow the regulations, I guess, is, uh, even if we didn't always do that meticulously in the past. So I am aware of the, uh, the other lot over there. Uh, none of us were there when that happened, so we don't know the logic behind that. And so we're left with trying to follow the regulations, uh, as they exist.
I understand what you're saying and trying to follow the regulations, but this is why we started out on this project over a year ago. And, uh, when we, we thought that this wouldn't be a problem because it had been done when I bought this house next door. So having done that, that's why we started this process and we've been through wetlands and then we've been through the ZBA and now we're here. And, uh, you know, at a big expense for, for a house for my daughter.
I understand.
And, and this is why we're here and trying our best. We've, we've, uh, done everything we possibly can to try to get this thing through. And it just seemed that Attorney Brants gave us some leeway here that, uh, there were, was a possibility with some leeway, uh, with the regulation. So that's why I'm bringing that up at this time, just to talk to you.
I, I understand, and I will go back to the fact that when we started this discussion almost a year ago, as you say, it was a horseshoe piece of property. And while I was uncomfortable with it at the time, I grew comfortable with the fact that it was in compliance with our regulations because we had sufficient lot with on the western side, which connected to that. And it was only at the last meeting was my first inclination that we were not going with that, with that plan any longer, and we had a different plan.
That was always, we were going to break off that lot line from wetland.
I disagree with that. I disagree with that.
Yes, and I have to, I have to disagree with it too. I have to just, that is not, that is not the map that I saw. That is not the map that I saw. I can tell you.
It's not the map that's posted online.
And, and the, the, it is not, I mean, I was on site, as you recall, and that is not what I saw. And, um, I, I, I mean, I have to take some exception to what Mr. Phillips just said. The, the, the chairman is not saying that you have to buy that land from the town of Andover. You don't have to. But you're the ones drawing these lines and have been changing these lines since we first saw them. And you have to draw them in a way that you meet the regulation. And yes, I'm trying to give you some flexibility here. But it is not correct to say that a year, that you've been working on this for a year and that we, and that it's been there all along. It wasn't. I mean, I know it wasn't. And, and, um, I mean, you, you, you have the option to draw these lines where you wish, you still have to show that they're in compliance. You still have to show that they're in compliance. And it has changed since when I saw it. I know that.
Excuse me, this is Tom Fiorentino. Today's purpose is advisory counsel for the Phillips family. Uh, my suggestion is that the board and Attorney Brants and Jim Howes, he have given us some options to consider here. Uh, and rather than have the board continue down this path today, my suggestion might be that, uh, for purposes of allowing us to consider those options and maybe approach the town about the purchase, that we table this or continue this matter until at least the next meeting, if that's feasible for everyone.
I, uh, I do think that is feasible. I know, uh, I don't know if there's anybody from the public who is, uh, looking to comment on that, looking around. The only person I don't know is Mr. Parkington. I don't know what, uh, what, uh, project you were coming to the meeting on behalf of. But I would certainly entertain a motion from the commission to close, to uh, continue the public hearing at our next meeting a month from now.
I move that we continue this hearing a month from now at our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so, uh, Vice Chairman Creme made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner England. Any discussion? I, uh, will, I'm looking for, uh, an affirmation vote, uh. Are there any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstentions? Okay, the, the motion carries, um, in, uh, I guess I will ask Attorney Brants, as long as you're here. We didn't seat members of the commission, so I don't know if I go, if it's seven oh oh or five oh oh. Uh, because we didn't seat anybody yet.
And, and because it's a public hearing is open, you don't have to yet. Um, the, uh, it's only when you reach deliberations that it becomes important. During, during public hearing, any member or alter, or alternate can speak or ask questions. It's only deliberations where it matters. So your, your, your motion to, um, uh, to, to continue, you don't even need a motion to continue a public hearing. A chairman can do that on his own.
Okay.
So you're, it's, you don't have to worry about who's voting.
Thank you. Mindy, for the record, uh, the, the motion was passed unanimously. And that, uh, that will close our public hearing for tonight. We will, we'll move over to the, uh, regular planning and zoning commission as soon as I can find the agenda. And thank you for your patience. I knew it would be, uh, lengthy, uncomfortable discussion.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to close out and thank you very much for your time. We'll be in touch over the course of the next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Yes, do you?
I apologize for taking that phone call, but just for your information, it was Mindy who had lost, our board clerk who had lost her internet connection. I'm just hoping she's back on.
I think she is, uh, she.
Okay. I didn't, I was trying to, to check the, the screen to make sure that it was recording for her and I kind of forgot that I was interrupting things there. Apologize.
Nope, not a problem.
Sorry, yeah, my, my internet went out, so I didn't know if I was missing everything and if I would be able to go back and, um, watch it on YouTube. But I wasn't off for long. And if I have any questions or if you need to add anything, um, next time, just let me know.
Very good. So it is eight seventeen. I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, first item on the agenda is roll call of seating and alternates. And so, uh, I see Vice Chairman Frome is here. Commissioner Person is here. Commissioner England is here. Commissioner Hutchinson is here. And I am here. So we have all the members of the commission and we, we will be seating. No alternates this evening. Next item is additions and changes to the agenda. The, one change, I would like to move the new business discussions up ahead of the old business because I see we've got some people in attendance here that, uh, that are looking for the new, new business. And I want to, uh, finish them up just as soon as we can here. So that would be, uh, a change to move new business ahead of the old business. And I would like to add an item, new business delta, low-income housing plan. Agent Halsey, I was thinking, is it, is it an oversight that we don't have an application for twenty-six Old Farms Road on the agenda tonight? And I didn't see anything posted online, so I'm assuming that, uh, that we will not.
It is an oversight on my part, yes.
Did you expect that to be on there?
I did.
Okay. Um,
It would be for receipt of application.
I, I did not see anything posted online in the application section on there.
Really? I had received it digitally and sent it forward. I did not check to make sure it was unlocked, posted.
Okay, unfortunately, I think for tonight we will not put that on the agenda. We're running late enough as it is. I apologize, uh, to the, uh, prospective applicants there that, uh, that we did not get that on there, but I saw no information prior to the meeting, um.
We got all the plans.
We, we, we do have the plans.
Yeah, the paper credits.
And I never think on my feet very well, even though I'm sitting down. If, if the, if the application went into the office, uh, we have no choice but to receive the application.
Right.
So we will receive the application tonight to start the clock. Um, might not discuss it very much, but the, but the clock is running as of today for us to act on the application. And, and we will probably get into most of the discussion on that at the next meeting, but, uh, but the application is received. And it's, it's not an issue that we have to vote on. It, uh, by virtue of the fact it's in, it's in.
Right. And is, is this something you need to set a public hearing on?
We, we will need to set a public hearing on because it is going to be an open space subdivision application. Um, but it is not, uh, completed. It's routing through the inland wetlands. And so I was going to hold off on setting the public hearing until after we resolve the wetlands issues.
That's fine. I was just going to say if, 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 um, I realize it was admitted from the agenda, but if you, if you wanted to set a public hearing, that's not an appealable decision anyway. So you could do that if you wish, but as you know, you have sixty-five days to open that hearing, so you don't have to deal with it this month.
Okay, right.
Do, do you need me? Do you want me to remain, Mr. Chairman?
I, uh, I do not. I appreciate, uh, your attendance here tonight, Attorney Branch, uh, and, uh, thank you for attending.
Well, I'll, I'll plan on being here for the next one on this Hendy Road matter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Bye.
Thank you, Mark.
And then going back, uh, the, the last comment on the, uh, agenda is on section seven, under approval of minutes, it has the Andover Planning and Zoning Commission agenda, which I think is.
I, I think that's just extraneous line from a title.
I, I think so. Cross that out. So that, uh, that's it for my changes. Anybody else have any other changes to the agenda? Okay, moving on, uh, next item is public comment. And, uh, any, anybody from the public want to comment, uh, at this point in time? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. The discussion of the application of fifty-seven Hendy Road, I will defer to our next meeting. Moving on to, uh, the next item is, uh, item B under new business is the application twenty-one oh two of Joe Mott, one forty-two Wales Road. Seeking site plan approval for an accessory apartment per section four point one one of the Andover zoning regulations. And I see Joe is, uh, with us tonight, uh, which, we will not act on your application tonight. It, we have to, uh, allow fifteen days before, when we get it to, uh, when we act on it. So we will be acting on it at the next meeting. But did you want to, uh, discuss the application with us, uh, while you're here tonight?
Yeah, so, uh, basically I'm applying to build a twenty-six by thirty-eight foot garage with an apartment above it, um, attached to my existing house here at one forty-two Wales Road.
Okay. And, uh, Agent Halsey, anything you want to, uh, discuss on that application with us?
Well, two things. Um, I just wanted to, to make sure that it's clear of what the applicant is looking for. And he's looking for a site plan approval from the commission, um, as opposed to a special permit approval. The, the regulation, as it was, uh, when it was rewritten a number of years ago, I believe, um, it allows, it doesn't require a special permit unless the commission chooses, provided of course that it is a, it's within the existing structure, is existing dwellings, which is the case here.
Okay.
And I did prepare, uh, I did review the plan that I sent out comments, which I trust you have.
I, I did see those, yep.
Okay.
And, uh,
I mean, there are a couple of deficiency, which I did ship deficiencies, which I did share with the applicant. And I, I, would you like him to address those at this time?
If he is ready to, uh, I'd be happy to listen.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, so the first one that I noticed is the eight hundred square foot maximum, um. Uh, Jim mentioned that to me today and I realized that we had slipped up on that. Um, we have a couple of options. One is there is a, um, a closet that is going to be extending into the apartment that is not accessible from the apartment. It's actually going to be a closet for the existing house. Um, this is my father here. He drew up the plans. We talked about ex- expanding that to make it larger. Um, but the easiest thing would be just to, um, take the front two feet of the apartment and move it back into the structure, the, the exterior wall into the structure, two feet to just shrink that front room a little bit to make it fit the eight hundred square foot maximum.
Okay. Would, would that require you to update the drawings a little bit, uh, in, in one of the? I, I know you asked for an exemption from the A two survey.
Yes.
And, uh, and we can make a motion and, and, uh, take care of that tonight to, to do, to vote on that. When we scanned the drawings, I don't know how dark the pencil was that, uh, the drawings were made from. I think, uh, they are certainly, they appear to be adequate, uh, for, for what we need to see of the accessory apartment. It's just that, uh, the, the site drawing itself and, and the dimensions on the drawings, I was not able to, uh, to see, so I can't do my own, you know, measurements and calculations of square footage and that, uh, in, in, uh, so I would like to get a darker copy. Maybe what you have, Jim, is, is darker and it just didn't scan right or?
Actually, it would be helpful to see the calculation of itself.
What, which calculation are you asking about?
For the square footage, just, just.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in, in all, uh, to the commission, in all fairness, uh, it was only this afternoon that I spoke to Joe. I mean, so he didn't have a lot of time to re.
No, I understand. And then, uh, you know, what, what I don't think I see here, and I was expecting to see, is there will probably be some construction grading of the, the property. I was looking for some form of, uh, the erosion and sediment control plan, someplace where we might stockpile the, uh, the, the top soil that was, uh, you know, disturbed on that, uh, in, in those kind of things. So while we don't need the, the cost and expense of the A two, that doesn't mean that we don't need the information to be provided so that we can make sure that, uh, you know, what we get is, is what we're all expecting.
Okay.
So you're, so you're going to have to have something with the parking, adequate parking on a plot plan.
Uh, the, the apartment will be adding one bedroom and the addition of the garage will provide for two parking spots.
Yes, I, and I, uh, it seems unusual that one of the garage doors doesn't have the driveway next to it. I.
Yes, that, that was a oversight on our part. We, uh, yeah, missed that.
Okay. So anyhow, uh, we've, we've got, uh, we've got your application, uh, in our clock, uh, for, for running is going on that, uh, and, uh, if you can get us a little bit, uh, of a darker drawing so that we can get that scanned out or or, uh, Mr. Halsey, if you could just, uh, you make copies of whatever you've got, so we're not running them off. Maybe it's my printer that just came out real light. I, I'm not sure, but most of the other stuff I can read. I just couldn't get the, uh, the dimensions on that, if you will.
Okay, uh, just if, if I may. Go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, go.
Uh, so I just wanted to be clear that the, uh, the few things you were looking for were the driveway going to the other garage door. Um, the square footage of the lot. Um, the, the movement of the wall in two feet on the front to fulfill the, uh, maximum square footage.
Yes, and, and I do not have the, you know, the, the regu, well, I do have the regulations in front of me. I'm not going to go. There, there is normally on figuring out the square footage of an accessory apartment, it says a given percent of your house, your existing house square footage or this other number, whichever is greater in the top end or, or whichever smaller on the top, bigger on the bottom, I think. So, uh, I have not verified that eight hundred square foot is the right number for your application because I couldn't read the dimensions on there, but, uh, you just, there's not a lot of requirements that we're asking you to go through for the accessory apartment, especially when it's on the house. Uh, just, just make sure and invalidate with Agent Halsey that, uh, you've got everything there that, that you need.
Okay.
And, and Jim, I know that in our new regulations that shows exactly what they need for additional parking. And I, and I think it has to do with square footage. And the location of it.
Well, I think a house needs two, two parking spots and the accessory apartment adds one.
Adds one, yeah, all right.
And that's, uh, that's for our regulations.
Yeah, I, I think once the driveway is added, the, the additional driveway to the, to the rear garage, um, there'll probably be some. the, the additional driveway to the, to the rear garage, um, there'll probably be some, it, somehow that that will be addressed as part of that modification.
Okay, any other comments for tonight on, uh, on the one four two Whale Road Mott application?
I do have a, a comment.
Okay.
All, all of the regulations, all the items contained within four eleven um, are pretty objective with one exception, and that would be number I, and it has to do with, um, the basic character of the dwelling. And I just, I'm trying to, if at all possible, give, give the applicant some feedback on that as early as possible. Um, I don't know whether the commission had an opportunity to look at these plans. I, I realized, um, it just went up. I, I had also, I had a lot of trouble getting these, these on, um, the website. And I could, I wasn't able to. So I did, I mean, one thing I did notice is that, the, the, he has a single car, a single door, he's adding a single door to the front and bringing a single garage door around the side. Sort of breaking up that along continuous stretch of garage doors, which I think is helpful. And what he's proposing, which may, may not be clear, um, is to, to shrink the unit, to shrink the square footage, is to step the, the second floor of, of the, to shrink the apartment back without shrinking the garage, the footprint of the garage. Hence, you'd have a, a small, small roof there, uh, uh, which would be essentially a band, an architectural, a visual band, which I think would be very, very helpful. That's just my opinion. Um.
What, what do you mean by visual band?
Well, a fascia, there'd be s- small, like rafter tails right across the, the dimension, the front dimension, the front elevation across the space where the garage is, there'd be rafter tails with, with roofing, you know.
I guess.
Sheathing in a roof.
Yep.
A small roof, about eighteen inches, twenty-two feet, something of that nature, a fascia, um, I assume, and it would break up the, the line. I think you'd do a nice job. It would, you would aesthetically, it would be a nice addition. First, that's just my opinion. But again, this is subjective. I just was trying to avoid, um, I was trying to get Joe input is for early on.
I'm sure he, he appreciates that, as do we, and, uh, right. Okay, anything else on this particular application? Okay, thank you. That's all for tonight on, on that. Next item up for discussion is, uh, new business, Charlie, the gravel operation Route Six, update and request for extension of existing permit. And I see we've got, uh, Mr. Bell, the engineer here with us tonight.
Yes, sir.
I did see whatever, uh, we sent out. I, I saw your letter that, uh, I can't remember if it was posted on the website at this point, or if, uh, Agent Halsey sent that out, uh, by email to us. Um, and, and I have read through that, uh, what I, I would ask, uh, is that you, uh, you reviewed with Agent Halsey section sixteen point six of our regulations that, uh, that discusses, uh, a couple of things specifically for permit renewal that I didn't see addressed in your letter in, uh,
I don't believe I brought those to his attention.
Yet there's only about two things there, but I think it, uh, they, they are fairly important and, uh, so anyhow, I sixteen point six point one, the three copies of the planning and zoning commission application form. I'm not worried about that one. We'll get that. Sixteen point six point two grading plan showing the entire area of excavation and indicating which areas excavation has been completed. The plan shall show the grading plan of the remaining area to be excavated and shall include existing and proposed contours. So that's, uh, and then the, the third one is just paying a fee. And so, uh, really, it was that sixteen point six point two that, uh, I thought we needed to have before we, we could address the application.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I didn't read that section before I gave him the letter today. Um, we kind of did this in a, a last minute type thing.
I got it.
Um, I, I can give them a, give you a revised plan, uh, for next time.
Okay, and, and if you could get that submitted, you know, a week ahead of the meeting, that would be helpful. That way, uh, you know, we're not trying to digest it on the day of the meeting, which, uh, I know we all work to deadlines and, uh, but I find I have a hard time getting through all the information, uh, to support the meeting when it shows up on Monday afternoon.
I would, I would imagine so, sir, yeah.
Good. Would, would, uh, colorized, a color markup of the original plan suffice? That
If, if that's what you and Chris come up with as the best way to show it, uh, you know, I, I think there's a lot of different ways. All I know is the letter didn't have a drawing with it, and that was the one thing that was specifically
Yeah.
requested in our regulations.
Yeah, I, I did not notice that. I, I will point out that, I mean, the, yes.
Jim, this is Leanne. Would a colorized markup show, like, existing and proposed activity and dimensions and, and things like that?
Well, we can, we can show a markup plan, um, to scale, um, relatively to scale. I, it would be difficult to resurvey it because the, the gravel pit is active and whatever I, I survey is gonna change the next day. Um, basically, we're, we're only in like, uh, one phase, the, the back, uh, back full phased from four hundred feet to five hundred feet back. And the last part that just, uh, ties into the existing section in the rear. So we're, we're like a, a, a phase and a half of, of work right now. Um, with the various areas of storage on the site of, uh, you know, topsoil stumps and, uh, large stones and gravel in, in a, in a process, uh, area that, uh, has been, has been sifted already. Um, I can bring it up to date. At, at, you know, maybe in a couple of weeks when we, we finish clearing out a lot of the site in the back, that would probably be the most appropriate. And I'll get it to you, you know, uh, much further than a week before the meeting. And I can give you a, a colored up version, which might, uh, go well, uh, to understand of the site. You know, I glued on, on a full, a full, um, full size, you know, twenty-four by thirty-six, if that works for you.
That would be great. And, and I would also call your attention, uh, to that little introductory paragraph sixteen point six, before you get to what they're looking for. It says, "The, the commission shall not renew or extend any permit unless the operator is able to show through the report of a registered engineer that the excavation already completed conforms with the plan of operations as approved. The applicant shall apply for a permit renewal at least forty-five days prior to the expiration of the current permit." And it talks about that grading plan. So
Yeah.
We should look at, at the original thing, where we're at, where we're going, and, uh,
I mean, we have no section that's a hundred percent complete. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're down to the grade that we want for about, um, half of the, the, the rear section. And, um, hopefully, in, in a couple of weeks, we'll be, you know, a, a lot more complete, so we can show what is complete and to grade, um, before we start the restoration.
Okay, yep, just make sure we're in compliance with the regulations.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any, any
I have another question?
Oh, go ahead, Lu, Leanne.
Yes, um, as far as the, the phases, I believe there were several phases in the first place. So is Mr. Bell saying that they're about one and a half? Did I understand, say, I think you used the term one and a half, um, say, I don't know if the word percent is correct, but through this section in the back of the property?
Yeah, um, if you, uh, you want me to get up a plan? Would that help?
I think he said one and a quarter of the phases.
Yeah, we're, we're in, in the, in the back phase, cause, uh, through the commission's recommendation, two years ago, we started in the back instead of the front, and we're, we're basically, um, a hundred and fifty feet from the back limits of the gravel pit. You know, the, the last fifty feet is an area that's, goes from the proposed grade up to existing. It, you know, it slopes up on a two to one slope. We are in the phase between, uh, the four hundred foot mark and the five hundred foot mark. The five hundred and fifty foot mark is the end of the project. So we're, we're in that last full phase, and we're grading back to existing in, in the back. Um, we've got various piles of material in that phase we were working in. Uh, and that's what we hope to get out of there, you know, by the next meeting. So it would look like more like a completed first phase, uh, a completed phase plus the half a phase in the back. I say half a phase, it's, you know, it's about fifty feet. Or every phase is a hundred feet coming from the road.
Okay, thank you. So if you
Does that answer your question?
And someone just mentioned, um, a more, you know, whatever is more detailed, the colorized map or, you know, a, an upgrade. I understand what you mean about if you're excavating there now, it changes every day, but if you could show whatever is the most detailed.
Yeah, um, I can, I can do that. I, I think the color code would help more because, you know, I could show a lot of AutoCAD and a lot of notes and everything, but I, I think, you know, a good, uh, color code, you can get a, a definite C. And, you know, if you want, we can take some pictures so you can see what's going on too.
That would be great. And, uh, it does, one of the things you said, uh, I thought I recalled that we were going to complete one phase before we started the next, and you had made the comment that none of the phases were actually complete.
Um, the, the goal was, because if you do one phase and then try to restore it, you're gonna damage it as you go into the second phase. You, you basically have to get the first, you have to get one phase completely graded, which, the phase what we're working on i- is, is pretty close to that. Um, and then you get a ways into the next phase, so you can start restoring the phase that you've completed. That, that's why we had a bond for, uh, a total of two phases bond. As, um, you know, you would only let us work on a maximum of two phases at once. And we, we won't be completing the entire two phases, you know, we're, we're, we're like, gonna be like a, a phase and a half. Start restoring the back, get that restored, and then start going towards the front and start going into that phase as we restore the completed phase that we're working on now. Um, that, that's the plan. That's what it's always has been. Um, but instead of going from front to back, we're going from back to front. That's all.
Has all the erosion control been fixed?
Yes. Yeah, as of Friday, we had a meeting about a Thursday, and they immediately fixed everything on Friday. The, um, the stumps will be, uh, probably start going out this week. We hope to have all of them out, uh, within three weeks. And probably sooner. And we'd like to get, so as the stump's out, we can complete that back grading, so we can be ready for our restoration meeting on site.
Does that restoration meeting have a date, or is that when you complete what you want to do?
When we complete the grading in the back, yeah, we don't, we don't have a date yet. We've got a, you know, the, the things are going much slower than we had hoped. Really, we, we lost all the contracts and as the COVID pandemic started and everything just went to a grinding halt for quite a while.
Is a six-month request gonna be enough to wrap it up?
I can honestly say, I hope so. Um, we have enough, uh, contract to, to finish the project. Um, they, they believe they're gonna be done by first, second week in June. I don't think they will, but I think, um, I think a five-month timeframe extension should be, uh, plenty to get the, you know, the grading out, and then the final month would be, you know, uh, re- restoring the final phase. I think that should, it should be enough time. As long as we can hold our, uh, what, the, the, the location where they, they want the gravel, as long as that holds, we should, uh, shouldn't have a problem.
Is this?
You know, I, I hate to come back for another extension.
I'm not proposing one way or another, but I would ask the commission, is this something that, that you would like to do a site visit on to, uh, just to see, or are we, you know, ready to rely on photos and, uh, in an updated drawing at the next meeting to, uh, to allow us to make our decision?
I think it might be useful.
I'd, I'd be okay with the drawings, I think.
Um, I would go if you, you requested one, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, I would, uh, first request a motion that we do a site visit, uh, and we'll see, uh, how many takers we get. So Leanne, did you want to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we schedule a site visit.
Okay, is there a second? Scott, was that a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Uh, I know we normally do those on, uh, Saturday morning. I do have a conflict this Saturday. I would be available the following Saturday, uh, early on. I think, uh, we normally go at nine o'clock, uh, with, uh,
The later the better.
Good, I'm assuming you have the revised plan in hand at that time?
Um, I don't know if, if, uh, yeah.
Well, I don't know if you would need a revised plan because you're actually gonna see it in person. Um, I thought the idea was revised plan was to cover the section before the next meeting. I was, I was gonna like, try to wait till the, the week, a week and a half before the meeting, so it'll be most up to date. And if I do revise plan now, it's, it's gonna be what's out there today. And then I don't know when your meetings would be, two weeks.
Good point.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what we gain by doing a, a site visit either. I just wanted to bring the, the topic up, uh, to have the discussion on it, so we didn't come to, uh, after we're done saying, gee, we wish we would have gone over there, but it sounds like things are once again moving and, uh, and we might want to have our site visit, uh, after it's all done and see how, uh, how it was wrapped up before we close it out. Um,
I mean, it, not that much material has been taken out. Um, I think if you have a site visit, you're gonna find, I mean, you could see from one site of the property now to the other, it's, it's all at elevation five ninety-four. Um, but it's kind of a narrow window because we've got, you know, stockpiles there. Um, I, I'm, what do you think, Jim? I, you know, uh, of course, if you want a site bet, plan out, site visit, I'll support it. But, uh, you know, I could, I could submit pictures, and that, that might be maybe is helpful.
I don't either.
Why don't we do, uh, I, yes, why don't we do get some pictures? We'll put them online, and at the next meeting, if we need to do a site visit before we vote to feel comfortable, uh, we can make that determination at that point.
Okay, so this is Leanne. So we could do that procedurally if we have enough questions about the drawings or, or, and photos? or whatever submitted by Mr. Bell, uh, um, at the next meeting, we could still go on from there.
Right, we just wouldn't, uh, wouldn't actually act on the application at the May meeting. Uh, that would put us up against the wall. The, 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 uh, application that, that's currently approved, I think expires, uh, the end of June. Um, but we could, uh, we could do that in, at our June meeting, uh, vote and, and, uh, my, my sense is we would probably approve an extension, it's just a question, what are the conditions that we would want to put in there to, uh, approve it? But that's only my guess. So.
Okay, well, with, uh, go ahead, sorry.
Nope, so, uh, I guess at that point, uh, Leanne, if you want to withdraw your motion, uh, we can do that and take that up at the next meeting.
Yes, um, yes, with that understanding, then I'll withdraw my motion. And I guess Scott needs to agree as a seconder?
I agree.
Is that right?
I agree. And then the motion is withdrawn. Yeah, Chad, I'd like to see it after two phases are done and complete. Okay. Well, maybe that, that could be one of the conditions, right? Yeah, and we'll talk about that, uh, at the next meeting, uh, and, uh, as we figure out when to, when to schedule it. But, uh, again, there's hoping to be a lot of progress made between now and a month from now, so that's, that's good news.
Yeah, I, I would say, um, the commissioner is that by the next meeting, we're gonna know how successful we are on getting, you know, the material out there. You know, hopefully, we've already had the restoration meeting and that's underway and everything else. If we're in not much better shape than we are today, then, um, you know, we've got a problem. And, uh, we'll have to address as far as timing goes. Because maybe this is gonna get drawn out longer than we, uh, we anticipate.
So, okay, I, I think that's, uh, all that we'll cover on the gravel operation for tonight. And we'll continue that at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item on new business, uh, I added the low income housing plan. And, uh, you know, every town in Connecticut is, is, uh, required to have a low income housing plan. I think, uh, you know, sometime in, uh, by July first, twenty twenty-two, uh, in order to get state funding. And we do not currently have one. If, uh, if you look on, uh, our, I think it's under the, the, the regulation section of our website, you'll see, uh, something that's talked about incentive housing or something. And, uh, in that, uh, there's, there's a lot of information that, uh, provides the basis for development of a low income housing plan. But it never gets, uh, to the end and wraps it all up and says what our plan is. I have been, uh, in discussion with, uh, a fellow named Bill Warren, who's, uh, you know, a certified, uh, planner, if you will, he's the guy that's done, uh, I think our last two plan of conservations and development. And, uh, I'm working with him to, uh, to help us out on coming up with the, uh, the low income housing plan. And, uh, I am not aware right this minute of what the commission's involvement is in that. I'm sure there'll be some. Scott or Leanne, uh, based on your previous experience going through the plan of conservation and developments? Or Susan, uh, do, uh, you have any insight into how much our involvement is on that? Or are we just reviewing what he gives us? Or how does that work?
Um, this is Leanne, um, we, Bill Warner used to be our zoning agent. Um, and then we hired him, um, as a consultant. I believe we had to go to town meeting to request the money for, it, not just last time, but, you know, anytime because it's, it's not inexpensive. And, um, I think Bill did it last time. I'm not sure Susan or, or Scott can, can remind me if he did.
He did it the last time also.
Um, he, he did the first two. He, he did, he did the last two. When he did the, uh, one previous to the current one, he was our agent. And he did that as part of his job when he was our agent. He worked on the plan of development in addition to the other things. And then when we had to do the second plan, because we we were coming up against the, 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 uh, time constraint, we, we did put out a, uh, bid. And we had one or two others who came in. And we felt he had the, uh, the experience, he knew us, and his price was the best. And that's how we got him the second time.
I think, I think we'll be able to get through the, uh, the cost. Uh, talking, uh, with Eric Anderson, uh, he was looking to possibly use, this is a first step, if you will, on our next plan of conservation and development, which will be starting next year. And, uh, and he says the town has been putting aside money to support that endeavor for a while. So there is a pot of money, I think, that's available to support, uh, doing this. Um, and so, uh, I'm hoping that's not gonna be an issue. It's just a question of, of how much, uh, you know, time we put in with that. It, it did, my conversations with Bill sound like he was very familiar with Andover. I didn't know, he used to be our zoning agent. I guess that, that helps with that familiarity and, uh, we'll go, uh, we'll go with that. But I just want to let everybody know that, uh, that was going to end up being a fairly high priority thing for us because we have to get that done. Got plenty of time to do it, but it's very important to continuing our funding.
It's really a, a, a year and a few months though, right?
Right. I mean, maybe you can do that and then add it to the new P O C D. I, that's what, uh, that's what I'm hoping, uh, we do. So this is just really, uh, the first step of the P O C D.
And my recollection is that he, you know, once, once we did the initial, um, agreement about, you know, he knows what's expected. So my recollection is that it was kind of done in phases by him. And then he would come in person to one of our meetings and kind of do a PowerPoint presentation.
Right.
And let us know with pictures and text what he, how, how far along he was.
Okay, nope, that sounds, uh, that sounds good. So anyhow, that's all I wanted to, to share on the low income housing plan. And that completes, yep, go ahead, Leanne.
Leanne, again, I have another question. Um, what you started out talking about the Delta something low hu- housing plan? Is that something that's in place? Or I know there's something in the legislature, I have no idea what stage it's at or if it's even still a thing about affordable housing all over the state and zoning laws. And I have not followed it. Does that have something to do with this? Or is this something that you were saying something's in place, but you didn't see a conclusion to it or something?
So if you, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and share and see if I can pull up what, uh, I was referring to.
Okay.
And, uh,
You mean now?
Now, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So it's, uh, yeah. Everybody see my screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, so under the planning down here, Andover incentive housing zone. And if, if you look at that, uh, it's a very extensive document. Uh, we don't really have a lot of good options in our town for, uh, the low income housing. But, uh, but I think that's probably the majority of, of coming up with a plan. He just, uh, we need to get him to, uh, come up with a plan. That takes all the data and, and what are we gonna do with all that data? So that's what, uh, I'm gonna be asking him to do. But if you look at this, uh, you know, at your leisure, I think that's, uh, I think that's all the basis for what we need to do. Oh, is there some sort of criteria, Chad, that he's gonna have to follow? They're, they're, uh, looking for each town to have ten percent low income housing.
I thought it was five percent.
Well, I, I think it used to be five percent. And that's, you, as you say, there's an awful lot of, uh, activity going on at, in Hartford right now about low income housing and, uh, and all that. So I, I'm not sure the dust is all settled on where that's going. But the view is that every town needs to do their fair share to provide for low income housing to, uh, for the population. And, uh, and so we'll see how that comes out. But, uh, the first thing that they're gonna do is make us have a plan. And then there's gonna be a requirement that that plan gets updated periodically to keep up with the, all the changes, uh, that, that Hartford's coming up with.
So this is something that's in place? Has this, is this something that we're behind on or is this something that, that Bill just got passed?
Uh, we are behind on it. And, uh, this is, uh, you know, one of the, I'm not sure. Well, I know Eric's been following a lot of this stuff, but, you know, he's, he's looking for where to get grants and all that kind of stuff. At that land use seminar that, uh, that we had back in March, they were talking about that during a couple of the presentations. And I started, uh, you know, pulling the string on, uh, on that there. And it soon became clear that the plan that somebody'd be looking for was much bigger than anything that I was gonna be able to do. And so, um, looking through our website, uh, you know, I looked at this Andover incentive housing zone. And, and as I say, I think it's a very good, uh, write-up. It just doesn't, it doesn't generate a plan. So we've gotta have a plan of what we're gonna do with all that information to increase our fair share of, uh, incentive housing. And, and one of the options is that, uh, a lot of the, the low income housing can be for older folks. And, and Andover does have a fair share of older folks. And so maybe there's, uh, you know, a way we can help out that community, not exactly sure. But I do know that, uh, Bill Warren has, uh, done it, uh, created plans for several other towns. So this is something that he knows how to do and, uh, then I'm sure he'll do a good job for us.
Does anyone know what percent we're at right now?
I think, uh, it's like five point eight, if I was to guess. And that incentive housing thing talks to, to that number.
Okay.
Let me just, uh, yeah, it's not gonna jump out at me, uh, yep. I'm not even gonna try to find it and all that stuff. Uh, you guys are all invited to, to look at that. Uh, there's probably ten, twelve pages full of charts and, and good reading and, uh, but it's a hot topic, uh, and, and we need to get caught up to speed on it.
Is there a deadline?
There is, it's that, uh, I think it's, uh, you know, the end of June, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I don't know, I'm sorry if you mentioned that, okay, earlier, but I didn't hear.
So we've got, uh, we've got a year, but a year goes by very fast. And, uh, and so we're not late probably getting Bill involved in it, but we're certainly not too early.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, I'm gonna go up into the old business now. And, uh, it's, uh, first thing on the old business is sign regulations. And so, uh, I have not worked too much on sign regulations lately. I've been working on, uh, a couple of other things, like trying to understand lot width. But I got, uh, two inquiries and I'll pass on to you guys. And I would expect that, uh, Jim might have the lead on these before all is said and done. But the first one, uh, involves, uh, if you read the River East, uh, a week or two ago, it talked about Jerry Wright getting some monument in the Veterans Memorial Park out on Route Six and Three Sixty. And so he's looking, uh, you know, that ceremony's coming up in June. He's looking to put a big sign out there. We came through no signs in the, uh, the memorial. Then, uh, if he wants a sign, it probably needs to go where I have seen the sign for the Andover Historical Museum posted on the other side of Monument Road there a couple of times. He also wanted to put a big banner up somewhere, uh, in the memorial. And I told him that banners were signs. And I told him that if he wanted to pursue it any further, the ordinance states that the town of Andover decides or puts up any signs, uh, signs are prohibitive except those, uh, put up by the town of Andover. And if he wanted to approach the beautification committee, who looking through the different, uh, things to, uh, see who had cognizance over that park, I thought they did. And if he could convince them to request that Jerry put up a banner on behalf of the town of Andover, that might be a satisfactory way to go it. But I, uh, I just told him our zoning regulations did not allow him to put up a banner. So Jim, if you hear any more on that, that's what I told, uh, Jerry. The second inquiry that came to me today was, uh, I'm doing my walk and Diane Grinier, you know, where the town is, uh, coming up with various grants for various things. And I guess we're gonna get a couple of, uh, good size, welcome to Andover signs. Hey. And I think that's a great idea. She asked me, uh, did planning and zoning get involved in that at all? And I said, most likely. And, and so she did not know where she was looking to put up those signs. And I know the rules are probably different along the state routes than they are all the other places. But I told her that she would probably need to work with the planning and zoning commission. And I wasn't all that familiar with how, how that, uh, would go. But I did think that it would be nice to have a nice welcome to Andover sign out there on the highway. So that's that. I'm not gonna talk anymore about frontage requirements at this point. We'll see how this, uh, this example plays out. Um, but I'm more, more convinced that I understand width, it's not all bad. It's maybe a little different than frontage, but it's awful close. And, uh, it can, it can get us what we're looking for. I'm not opposed to changing width to frontage, uh, after we get done with this. But, uh, I think, uh, now that I understand width, that, uh, we can work with it. Any, any questions on either of those old business topics? Okay, moving on, the next is approval of minutes. And first on the list, uh, is the regular meeting of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I move to approve the next of March fifteenth.
Is that Leanne?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Leanne.
Sorry, yep.
No, is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Susan.
My second.
And, uh, any discussion on the minutes? And I had none. Going once. Going twice. Going three times. Uh, hearing no comments. Uh, Anne, how you vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion carries five zero zero. Next up, are the site walk special meeting minutes from March twentieth, twenty twenty-one?
I, I move approval of the site walk special meeting minutes of March twentieth. I I move approval of the site walk special meeting minutes of March 20, 2021.
Thank you, Susan.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion on those minutes?
And and just for the record, I did go on a site walk.
Okay.
With the landowner there.
And I, this is Leanne. Um, just for a general discussion. I was not on the sidewalk, so I'm going to abstain. I went up there just driving by in the road to make sure that it was where I thought it was, which it was, because I was friends with a family who owned it a long time ago. And somebody passed me on the left on the Henry Road Bridge while I was approaching the property, so.
I, so, did you say you would need to excuse, recuse yourself from this issue?
Not from the whole issue. Uh, well, it's it's up to you. I was not on the sidewalk.
Okay, no, I I got you. And and that would not necessarily be a reason for recusal in unless you felt that it needed to be. I think you you heard all the discussion tonight. And and the issues that we were discussing tonight certainly were not anything that that popped up on the sidewalk.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I think that's valuable. And the discussion tonight seemed to be things like, again, the discussion about with and frontage, which is not a well, people had different opinions tonight, but I guess I'm not sure how to say it, but people, um, it's kind of, it it either is or it isn't kind of thing. It's not something like you just said that was came from the sidewalk. And then um, I think Scott brought up the I know about the flood plain. Um, so as you just said, I doesn't sound like those things that were changed by not being on the sidewalk, but.
Right, yep. Okay, and and so the 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 people present at the site walk on March 20 are listed correctly in the minutes. I understand that Leanne and Scott both went out there to take a look, but I will leave the 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 participants, as is in the write-up here. At least that would be my proposal. You guys will all vote out here in a minute.
Where I thought it was. I didn't get out and go on the property.
Yep, okay. Any other comments on the minutes? Hearing none. We'll we'll call for a vote, Anne.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion carries 401 with Leanne Hutchinson abstaining. And there we go. I misplaced my copy of the agenda. I know we're getting close to that adjournment thing, so don't want to lose lose it now. Moving on, item eight correspondence, Agent Halsey, you got anything for us there?
No.
Okay. Item nine, enforcement action, 44 Wales Road.
On 44 Wales Road, there was a a cease and desist sent out several months ago for someone regarding someone living in a trailer. And I was informed that they have ceased to live in there. And I've been by the by the site several times and haven't seen any activity. I did not ask them to remove the trailer because it's not a violation, but it appears that they're in conformance. But I will continue to monitor that. As far as additional items to report, it's just busy time of year, a lot of lot of activity, probably. Spring related house is under construction over on Lake Road. But involving the 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 new lake rigs. And and a few other applications are pending that will require the the nutrient allocation plan to be prepared. We're operating on kind of a skeleton staff in a in the building office with a few hours a week. The land use administrator position is still only about 10 hours a week right now, and hoping that will change in the near future. We're still transitioning with the town. As far as coverage with the with the building inspector. Hopefully that will still go smoothly as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to go back to the person who made the complaint about Whale Road and and ask them if they're satisfied with the action that was taken, or they would give you
Absolutely.
Do you know the guy still living there?
Absolutely. I I will contact, I I do, I know the the person who filed the complaint, and I I will follow up with that, yes.
Okay, yep, I think.
I do have a couple other things going on. The gentleman that trains dogs at the post farm has inquired about a possible kennel permit. I don't know if anybody has any history on this, but apparently a permit was issued a number of years ago, and the site was never built out. But he's looking to do something on a different portion of the farm. And actually, it's it's been operating, I think, for 13 years. So gentleman recently isn't or is purchased or is in the process of purchasing the portion, Scott Tree Farm, or at least a portion of it on Bunker Hill Road, and is is interested in doing some creative events there. And I had asked him to put together a plan and and approach the the commission on an informal basis to get some feedback. But I haven't heard from him as yet.
Does he have any application in or, you know, for his home business or business business that he is doing now?
No, he does not. I'm not positive. I don't know whether that's a use of what he's doing is a use of right or not. I'm going to check and be and get back to him when he's on his approaching the commission.
Okay, yep, because I did notice as I drove down Route 6 the other day, the the sign out there, something about dog training or whatever, as you would.
Oh, that gentleman, I'm sorry. No, I I was thinking of Bunker Hill, I'm sorry.
Oh, yep.
No, I I will be contacting him tomorrow, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Jim, if that if that guy that had the kennel permit, he is dog training now, is does he have a permit to do the dog training that he has going now?
No. He's also a dog warden.
Right, yeah.
Apparently he doesn't.
What is it that Jim rectify that, you know?
What is it that he needs to do to get to to get that?
He need a special permit. I mean, you have to apply for a special permit.
Oh, he's doing it now?
Been doing it for 13 years, apparently.
On the post farm?
It's mostly gay. He he doesn't operate a kennel per se. It's it's doggy daycare and training. But I don't know what else it would fit under.
So is he applying for something?
Hopefully, I mean, I indicated, when I met with him, I he had indicated he had a special permit. When I went back to check, it became apparent that it was it was for a different portion of the post farm. So I thought he might have the option of coming back to the commission and getting a revision. And then he was gone for a week. He's on a state for a week.
It was only, go ahead, Leanne.
Oh, uh, thank you. Jim, what's the status of it right now?
It's operating without a permit, without benefit of a permit.
Okay. And is this the same person, for clarification, with with purchasing or doing some activity on what was or is Bob Russell's property on Bunker Hill or Route 6, or?
No.
Different thing?
It was two separate individuals.
Okay. So this has nothing to do with any activity on Bunker Hill has nothing to do, and it's not the same person as the dog count?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, so you're asking him to to fill out his home base business application?
Special permit application, yeah. Um, I believe. I don't, I don't you know, I mean, it it doesn't fall under home base. As far as I know, I I'll double check that. Actually, it it doesn't. He doesn't live there. I mean.
Yeah, he rents, he rents that house down in back there, I think, though.
His, he he rents it, and his mother lives in it.
Oh.
And he apparently lives on Route 6. Um, is what he told me, he not questioning it.
Yeah. Okay, we're following that. Something's not right. We'll have to get that
Resolved.
But yeah, let's talk about the way ahead on whatever we're going to do there at the next meeting on that. Any, anything else, Jim?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item 10, commission discussion miscellaneous. Anybody have anything they want to talk about tonight? Oh. Okay, I think we'll move on then. I don't see anybody else from the public that hung around. Everybody's gone, so no public comment. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott.
A second down.
Thank you, Anne. Any opposed? No? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries 500. Thank you very much, everybody. And sounds like next, next month's meeting. Jim, do you have the date for that? I don't have my calendar with me right this minute. I think it's regular through Monday.
May 17, I think.
May 17, that sounds about right, so. Sounds like we'll have another big meeting then. Thank you all for your time and energy. And we'll see you then. Good night.
Okay.
Good night.